The Crow Wing County Committee, the whole meeting together. And our first presentation is by Karen, Rachel, and Tammy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tammy Loick, Adult Services Manager over at Community Services. And yes, with me today is Rachel Zeta. And Rachel supervises our adult mental health, substance use disorders, and our housing programs. And she will be leading our presentation today because she is definitely one of our experts in the way of housing. So she's going to be doing a presentation on our point in time count.
All right. Well, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for taking the time to hear this information. So I'm going to share an annual point in time count with you guys. So I think the first question you have is what is the point in time count? So the point in time count is an annual count of individuals that are experiencing homelessness. This is a nationwide count. It happens every year, usually within the 10 last days in January, which is awesome for our state, as you can imagine. It gets pretty cold during that time. So like I said, it happens every year. And this information is a snapshot. It's just trying to kind of get an estimate about how many individuals may be experiencing homelessness in our community. So the purpose of this point in time count is to kind of identify gaps and funding opportunities and to make informed decisions about, you know, what a community may need to serve our unhoused population. So I just want to clarify a couple of definitions. So as we move through the report, I'll be talking about a couple of different definitions. So one is our homeless count. So that is by HUD. They use the federal definition. So what that means, if someone is in this category, is they lack a fixed shelter. So they don't have a permanent place to stay. They may be staying in emergency shelter. They may be staying in a car, on the streets, in a fish house, storage shed. So any place that may not be considered as a permanent residence. So that is the federal definition. So Minnesota takes it one step further. And we also count individuals that are doubled up or couch hopping. You may have heard that term before. And if someone's in that category, they're basically staying with a family or friend or somebody on a temporary basis. So they don't have any permanent ties to that location. They're just kind of staying there for a short period of time. So those are the two definitions of homelessness that we'll work through in this report. So if you go to the next slide. So our state is broken up into different continuum of care. So what a continuum of care is, it's a local planning body that consists of individuals, community providers, to kind of identify services and our needs within our community. So Crow Wing County is in our central continuum of care region. And that, our central region, consists of 13 counties. So on this chart here, I have all of our counties listed out. So as you can kind of just look at this chart here, so Stearns County, you know, we know that's a pretty large population. They're one of the highest individuals that, or counties, that had a high count this year. So they counted 885 individuals that were both homeless and doubled up. And then when you look at the next number, it is, so we're second in our continuum. So we counted a total of 215 individuals on the night of January 24th, 24th, '24. So in the 13 counties, we're second highest. And then followed by that is Pine County with 186 individuals that were counted on that night. So moving into the Crow Wing County specific data, like I said, we had counted a total of 250 individuals experiencing homelessness in our county. 81 of those were staying in some form of emergency shelter or transitional housing. So the emergency shelter, you know, could have been the, you know, the warming shelter that we have. It could be a hotel or motel voucher paid by an agency. So those are kind of, you know, what we classify as emergency shelter. Transitional housing is a temporary housing option. They're only able to stay there for a short period of time. So if they're in that residency, they are still considered homeless. And then we counted 54 individuals that were unsheltered. So they were staying, you know, on our streets, fish houses, storage sheds, cars, things like that. And then we had counted 80 individuals that were doubled up on that night. And then you kind of have a percentage breakdown too, for those that like percentages. But when you kind of look at it, our doubled up and our emergency shelters are very, very close in percentage-wise. And then our unsheltered count is that 25% of our total number. Any questions?
Before you move on from that one, so I guess I'm curious on how, who's counting? And how do you, how do you know, how do you know somebody's doubled up? Is this like self-reporting? Or I guess I don't know how you can come up with the numbers.
Yep.
If somebody's in an emergency shelter, yes, I can do a head count there. But I don't understand. And how do you know 54 people are unsheltered?
Yep, that's a great question.
I know it is.
Yep. Well, a question that a lot of people have, right? Because it's like, seems like a high number. Yep. So the annual point in time count is a coordinated effort with, you know, service providers, volunteers in our community. So we have a survey that we complete. So we train volunteers and providers to administer the survey. So we've done it multiple different ways. So we've actually like been out on the streets, you know, trying to find individuals or, you know, trying to, you know, identify people that way. We've never had a good count because, you know, I mean, we kind of have a large county. It takes time driving from place to place to place. So what has been the most effective to get, you know, a more accurate count is lots of planning efforts, working with community providers, individuals that, you know, they're already working with and they know that they are experiencing homelessness. So, you know, within the county, I'll talk about specifically, we work with the probation agents, our family team, our adult service team. So they've already been identified, you know, throughout the year because we're already working with them and we know where they're at. And then also too, with other community providers, you know, they already have them identified. And then they may know somebody too. So, you know, when we, you know, do a survey with an individual who is unhoused, like, do you know anyone else? And they'll go, oh yeah, I know so-and-so. So it's a lot of word of mouth and community organization. So did that answer your question?
And this counts?
Not really. I think this is a complicated issue. But I gotta say that I'm, I'm concerned about it. And I have talked to, and I don't know if I've talked to you, Deb, or I've talked to some, I talked to somebody about people that are, you know, I don't know if they're homeless or what they're doing, but they're camping on county land. And especially if it's happening down below the Evergreen Cemetery, which is city land and county land. And they're staying there. And, you know, I don't know if it matters if, if your department goes there and says, hey, we'll help you. Some people don't want any help and they want to continue to stay there. And I don't think we can let that happen. Because they're, they're making a mess that needs to be cleaned up. And if they don't want help, but they can't stay there, you know? And something, something needs to be done. I talked, I either talked to Gary or I talked to somebody that we need, we need an ordinance or something to make sure that, because I think there is a rule that somebody can camp on county property for 14 days, but then they have to move. Oh, no, we just talked about that at the In-RAC committee, okay? So now it's coming back to me. But I, I think this is something we got to look into and because I think if you make it attractive for people, they're going to just, they're going to come here and then we're going to have a problem. I watched the city council meeting, the whole, in Brainerd, and they're trying to get ahead of this and give the police the tools that they need to take care of this if this starts to get out of control.
Yeah, you know, I think we have been, I think, this is the count part of it. And then that we work with other agencies in the community. So it's not just us out counting the individuals that we find. And this is what creates the funding and the grants for rural development, you know, for the, for housing for people, right, in our community? And so, you know, in regards to the encampments, we have been working very closely with our local law enforcement. We have our social workers that are also out there working. We have our housing team, Rachel, they've set up a housing response to talk about the individuals that we know that are homeless, experiencing homelessness during the time that our shelter is not open. We don't have the option to have them go to the shelter during the summer months at this time. Our shelter that Bridges of Hope offers to the community, again, in community partnership with all of us, is only open typically from the end of September through the end of April. And so I think that too has led somewhat to, I think we always had some camping going on of our homeless population. And I agree with you, Commissioner Coring, that there are some people that are definitely harder for us to house or maybe aren't ready. That's one of the things that Rachel and I have been working on is we've had a number of recovery homes that have opened in our community, but not everybody is ready for recovery or wants to be in recovery. And so those individuals typically won't pick a recovery home. We lost our board and lodge that Bergstallers was running for many years. That was another option for people who really, truly, like I said, didn't want to be maybe in recovery right now. And it gave them a place, it gave them a roof over their head and gave them a place to stay. We are trying to look at providers that may have an interest in serving our long-term homeless population. Because as you just said, our law enforcement is aware of these individuals. Our agency is aware of them too. I think right now, the housing response team has right around seven, 15 to 17 individuals that they're currently actively working with that we know are homeless today. And those are some of the people that have some real challenges and barriers to getting into long-term housing.
And I would just say that I, I want to be on the front end of this in case it starts to be, one of the city council people last night said, I don't want to be on the cutting edge, I want to be in the middle of the pack. Well, no, that's not how Crow Wing County operates. We want to try to be ahead of the, if there's a potential issue, we want to be ahead of that and have some ordinances or have some rules that, that this doesn't get out of hand. Because if it gets to be a large encampment, I mean, all you got to do is go to these big cities. There's drugs, there's just a lot of bad stuff going on there. And I'm not, I'm, as long as I'm sitting up here, I'm, I, we can't let that happen. We can't let that start to happen and get away from us.
Yeah, and that again speaks to that housing response team. And Lighthouse Beginnings opened the Day Center that offers some, you know, day activity, day, a place for people to go that's a healthy environment, that they can be, get out from the sun and be someplace that they can, you know, have fresh water and food and, you know? And I think the other thing we have to remember is that Brainerd and Baxter are the hub of where our resources are. That is where our soup kitchen is. And I think people will stay closer to those resources, our Salvation Army. And so I think, you know, just keep that in mind. And we are completely aware that there's been a lot of conversations going on, even with the individuals that we know are camping or, you know, are out in the community with the, keeping the areas clean, following rules. If you're asked to leave, moving on. So we are, along with law enforcement, really trying to stay ahead of that.
And I'm hopeful, you know, because I'm not afraid to say what's on my mind. You know, this might ignite, we'll probably have a whole bunch of protesters here holding signs like they were at the Brainerd City Council meeting last night, which, I don't know, that just seemed kind of odd to me, like it was organized or something. But anyway, I guess that's all I've got to say on that. I'll, I'll try to shut up and listen to the rest of the presentation.
Karen, if I might like to, and I appreciate what you're saying, Commissioner Coring, because I think that with this problem, we need to be open to whatever the solutions might be. And there could be costs that are associated with it, but we need to be open to it if we want to address it. We can't just make rules and ordinances that will address it. They need a place to stay. That's the ultimate goal, is to get them into a place where they can stay. We also have to acknowledge that there will be a percentage of this group that will never comply to anything. And they will do whatever they're going to do. And we can't solve it 100%. That's frustrating for our community services where you want to solve everybody's problem.
Yep.
So we have to be willing to acknowledge that. And that will continue to be a battle as we go on. We hope to minimize that as much as we possibly can. The other thing is, is a point in time count, there's probably a lot more out there than what these numbers are reflecting.
Correct.
And I think we have to acknowledge that, that, again, this is one.
One night. It's a snapshot.
It doesn't actually reflect reality in our county.
Yep, thank you for that. And yeah, the next slide, I just kind of did a historical picture. And as you can see, we are moving up in all areas. So, you know, more people are staying in emergency shelter, transitional, you know, more people are unsheltered and doubled up. But to both of your points, Commissioners, yes, we do have to get ahead of it. And yes, we do have to invest. So communities, you know, across the nation or states that have addressed this and got down to basically what's called zero homelessness, have had strong investments in housing and programming to support our individuals. Establishing rules and regulations sometimes have had a negative effect in some communities. I need to clarify that. But, you know, that investment in housing and programming has been the most successful to reduce homelessness in their communities.
Maybe as an example of that, you know, if we think, and I think too, just thinking about our count, and obviously, we didn't have a shelter a number of years ago. And we started that, I think, in 2021, I think, the fall of 2021. And, you know, and we were talking about how even this housing response team, that we have a better, we're able to make contact with these individuals, where in the past we didn't always, we weren't always able to do that. And that has been helpful for us to getting people housed. Lighthouse Beginnings has been very successful with housing a number of individuals that have been experiencing homelessness or have been considered long-term homeless. So again, just having those types of programs in our community can be really helpful to addressing this problem. You know, the shelter, I know there's been some resistance on that or was. But I can just tell you that our law enforcement and our agency have really appreciated having an option, an option for people. We have people that are released late in the day from our county jail that don't have a place to go. And sometimes that is, you know, a very viable option for them, especially when it's winter and we're trying to figure out what to do. There's been individuals found in laundromats or in our gas stations or in a car with no place to go. And so this has really given our community an option, a safe option for people who are experiencing homelessness. And this is real in our community. So we just thank you for letting us bring this data to you. And we welcome your questions. And we know that it's a complex, tough topic. And we just want you to feel that you can ask us questions and we wanted to put the data in front of you so you can see it.
One other comment that I have is, you know, I've, you know, Commissioner Hogan and I go to lunch, we've talked about this housing stuff multiple, multiple times, you know, how, how do we take care of it? You know, I, I haven't, you know, necessarily been a fan of the Housing Trust Fund. But I've thought about different, you know, ideas and bounced them off a dug. But you know, here's, here's one idea, and this might sound really stupid, but I don't really care.
I didn't think so.
You know, what about if you had, kind of visualize this, if you had a plot of land, and it probably would have to be in the city of Brainerd or Baxter or whatever have you, and you develop it in a different way, so it's a whole community of small, tiny houses. So that it's, it's, when you come in the door, it's kind of like a studio where, I mean, it's so small where you could, it's not that expensive to build, not like building a giant house or a big, giant apartment building with elevators and everything. It's tiny little houses, so every person has their own individual little house. But it's like a studio apartment. And it's just like a small little community of those little houses there. And where either somebody, I don't know if it would be ownership or if they would rent them, because, you know, the rents are getting absolutely insane. I don't know how anybody can afford to pay rent. I mean, I talked to somebody, they were paying $1,800 a month. That's absolutely insane. Where, where you could find some rents that would be like $500 or $600 or something like that. I don't know, I just think that would be an idea that, and, and we talk about homeownership, it's so important for somebody to own their own home. And let's say this is in, this is in some plot where you have it, and they actually own their house. They own that little tiny house. You know, it isn't, it isn't much, but it's a starter place, you know? So I, I don't know, that's just an idea that I've floated it by Doug and, and, you know...
And I think that's what, we have had some providers in our community that have definitely been interested in that. And have, really, the Creekside community is an example of that, where they really did focus on those that had been experiencing long-term homelessness. And, you know, I think the goal, the idea there originally was to have more homes. You can maybe speak to how many homes they have over there and...
Yep. So Commissioner Coring, I have to say, you made me smile.
Did I?
You did, yes.
You know, if you go down, and it's even to expand on it, what's the name of that on Oak Street down there? Where you turn down there, the development that we, that kind of went broken?
Brainerd Oaks.
Brainerd Oaks. If you drive into Brainerd Oaks, it kind of reminds me of that, but it would even actually be a smaller version. You know, those are kind of like big three-bedroom houses, but they're really close together. And I just envision it like that, except sized down.
Yes.
So you, you get a lot of those little houses on a plot of land. Anyway, it's just...
Yeah, no, that's actually a fabulous idea. And we do have a lot of developers or agencies that are interested in doing that. And we do have individuals who are experiencing homelessness that want that. Our challenge has been kind of the zoning. So that would be a wonderful opportunity if I can do an ask, like maybe that's something that, you know, we could use your help on to, you know, approve rezoning so that that project would be allowed. Because we do have interest to develop something like that.
But I think it's some, it would have to be somewhere where there's water and sewer.
Correct.
I mean, the county, you know, I know that some people that are run for office are saying, oh, develop all the county land. Nah, that's, that doesn't necessarily, it has to be somewhere in the right spot. Because I'm envisioning these places really, they wouldn't have their own septic system. And they wouldn't have their own well. They'd have city water and city sewer. So anyway.
We do have a...
Do you have any, do you have any, we had a server?
That was Vicki Kinney's original dream, but with the zoning on the property, she wasn't allowed to do that.
Would you agree with that?
Yep, it would be. But I can tell you, I have had individuals in our northern part of the county, in Emily and Pequot area, that have expressed interest in, in doing something like that. So I mean, it would be outside of, you know, it would be in the county area. So there's interest.
So I have a question here in regards to if everybody else, are you done?
You're not, you're not interrupting me.
Okay, just want to make sure. So in the double ups, you know, that, that you should have a pretty good number of what those double ups are because people are reporting that. Somebody either owns a home and somebody's, you know, using some rooms, not, not an apartment per se, it's just they're doubling up in the person's house.
It could be an apartment too.
It could be in an apartment too, they're doubling up in that. Is it, in those cases, it's not a homelessness per se, is it because they can't find a place to stay? Is that what maybe is what's happening in the double ups?
It's still a form of homelessness. The state recognized it way back in the day, HUD recognized doubled up as being homeless. But now they've kind of just, you know, classified those who are, you know, unsheltered, street homeless. But it is a form of homeless. And one of the main reasons, you know, they're in that situation is, one, the affordability, and two, not able to find something. We have, you know, pretty low vacancy rates, you know, in our county, and it's a nationwide problem. But just the lack of available housing is a main contributor too.
And these people aren't looking for a home, they're even looking for an apartment, an affordable apartment or something to be in.
Yep, anything, yeah.
And so what Paul was talking about, you know, the mini home or the tiny home in a development type situation would fit, kind of fit into that role.
It would, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I didn't have anything else? Is there anybody else who'd like to?
I would only say that Commissioner Coring's made me smile also.
Well, I just would say that, you know, Doug and I have been talking about it. I just, you know, I know I'm, seem like I'm cold-hearted, but I'm not. I, I'm just trying, we're all trying to, I will say, the whole board, I think we, well, you don't run for office if you don't care about the people. And we do, and, you know, but I just, I know that we probably can't, I don't know what we can do. We could probably try to help give some direction to the HRA and maybe they come up with some proposal to the city of Brainerd or Baxter or whatever have you. But I, I just, I just, I know that building stuff is so expensive and I just think, just a tiny home, that just makes total sense to me.
Good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Crow Wing, Crow Wing County 4H Programs update from Tony. And I'll never get your name right, but Lori Sasas.
Shashana.
Shashana, thank you, Shashana. I've met you a few, a few times, but I can't ever get that name just in my coming out rate.
I'll help you out.
Keep, keep working with me, please.
We'll do that.
Tony Hanson, Regional Director with Extension. Just wanted to share a few comments quickly before my colleagues here share an update on the Crow Wing County 4H program. Just wanted to thank all the Commissioners for their continued support of Extension. I've been, I'm in the position now over a year, and I've had a lot of fun working with our stakeholders here in the county. We have a very engaged Extension Committee. And they're very interested in all of the investments that Crow Wing County has had in Extension programming, inclusive of 4H, which we'll be talking about today, and the Master Gardener Program as well, and our SNAP Ed educators who are operating in the county. And so I thank you all for your continued engagement. We'll be recognizing the Farm Family of the Year at the Crow Wing County Fair on August 1st. Brambling Rose Farm is recognized this year by the Extension Committee. So you're welcome to join us at that, at 11:00 AM in the Memorial Gardens at the county fair. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Shashana O'Shea, Crow Wing County 4H Extension Educator. I'm here presenting with my colleague.
Thank you for giving us some time today. My name is Lori Hall. I'm an operations educator. I work throughout the whole region, not just in Crow Wing County. We're going to talk a little bit about, if we could go to the next slide. This is Shashana's team. It's the whole region, but she gets access to all of these individuals. They support her in a lot of different ways. Shashana is what most of everybody in the community sees, the stakeholders, the volunteers, they work with her. But Shashana has access to, I'm going to use the word expert slightly of this team because I'm in this team. And so I'm going to go through them a little bit and just kind of explain what we do. So Jan Drodowski is the Northeast Program Leader, and she really makes sure that the educators have all the resources and people surrounding them to do their job well. She also makes sure that quality programming is happening, and that quality program really is focused on the research-based practices that the University of Minnesota has, Extension has. Jeremy up on the top, he's Volunteer Systems. This is, volunteers are an important part of our programming. If without them, we wouldn't have a programming. So Jeremy helps make sure that the, our practices and policies are implemented, that volunteers have the training and the knowledge that they need to be volunteers and really help with Shashana on making sure that they have the roles so that they know what they're doing. Next, the next two, Rebecca and David, really focus on programming specifics. Rebecca is our STEM educator, and she just makes sure that every county has STEM opportunities for youth to learn. David is our animal science, and he focuses on that animal science, which a lot of people kind of correlate with 4H, is thinking that all of that showcasing that happens at the county fair, he ensures that it's done appropriately, that youth are doing safe things, that we are following the animal department, the Minnesota Animals Department of having them registered, making sure that the policies for health and wellness is, is taken into consideration. Cassie Gerling, which I think most of you know, is our civic engagement and leadership. She makes sure those kids have an opportunity to become leaders. And that leadership could be, they could be a state, they could be a local ambassador and just share that, their 4H experience within the county. They could have a subject area that they want to learn a lot about and be a leader in that area. And she helps make sure that there's that path. She also looks at that civic engagement and making sure that they're engaged into their communities, into their state, even into the, the whole nation. Lots of opportunities in 4H for youth to go to Washington and, and learn stuff from that perspective too. And then last is me. I do operations. And operations is risk management and financial management. So the risk management, just making sure that we have policies in place to ensure that the kids are safe physically and emotionally. And then that finances is just making sure that the funds that are raised by the Federation and the clubs are used appropriately according to our nonprofit status. And also making sure that those youth get the opportunity to learn all of that. They learn the budgets, they learn how to manage the money, they learn to know what that nonprofit means, and that they have that opportunity as well. Right, wait until we go onto the next slide. And so positive youth development really is our philosophy. And we want to see all youth thrive in that. And so we look at four different areas when we think about that to make sure that they have that long-term success. We uphold and validate a unit... We uphold and validate a unique, um, individual youth spark or interest, so a youth might, um, come to Shashana and say, I want to learn about aerospace, and she's like, I don't have an aerospace, but she's going to try to find it, she's going to give them a path to learn that, a path to showcase that, a path to bring a project to the County Fair, to, um, share that, that knowledge with everyone else. So she's going to encourage and support that engagement, giving them that scaffolding learning and leadership opportunity, make sure that they have a sense of belonging, not just to their 4-H club or their 4-H community, but to the community as a whole, the, the city, the county, the state, that they belong and that they feel like they have a place in that area. And then probably one of the most important ones is to have that supportive relationships with caring adults, um, that, um, that, um, hopefully will last a lifetime, and, and have that mentorship. And so now the next slide talks about what makes us unique, um, we engage with youth, um, sometimes from kindergarten all the way up to 13, so sometimes a whole decade that we're engaging in these youth's lives, and we give, and we have a great depth of contact with how that youth is engaged in their club, in their project area, their, they have the opportunities for camps and leadership retreats, and really that culmination, that showcase that happens at county and state fair, where they really get to take what they learn and share it with others. And then we also leverage all of these resources of Extension to support that 4-H staff, so that whole team I talked about earlier, those are the experts that walk alongside Shashana, really to get that programming here in this county. Right, and I think I'll hand it over to Shashana now.
So Minnesota 4-H reaches more than 41,500 youth around the state. Our team, consisting of program staff and volunteers, as well as state program leaders, work together to deliver youth development programs that give opportunities for youth to learn by developing a passion in their areas of interest and lead as innovators and agents of change. In this presentation, we'll share some recent local 4-H events that show that when we provide safe and supportive spaces for youth to learn and lead, 4-H is helping youth to thrive. So in Crowing County, we have 84 adult screen volunteers, and we have 296 youth currently registered. Um, this past year, we partnered with a local after-school program, Fund and Friends, to deliver 4-H curriculum to youth in grades K through 4. Through this partnership, we were able to offer programming to 38 new youth, so our program is growing. Um, this past spring, Crowing County 4-H provided an opportunity for the community to learn more about 4-H and how they can get involved in our program with or without an animal. Crowing County 4-H youth and adult volunteers brought their animals to the event, allowing attendees to interact with the animals and learn more about each species through educational displays. By providing this opportunity, 4-H is reaching potential members and making sure that everyone has the opportunity to participate and benefit from our program. So we are empowering youth to lead today. Crowing County ambassadors are made up of 15 youth in grades 6 through 13. The ambassadors this past winter wanted to teach other 4-H youth new skills that they themselves were passionate about. The ambassadors, along with a few adult leaders, planned and facilitated a project day that taught 13 4-H youth projects in STEM, needle felting, cooking and baking, and art. Through this process of planning, the ambassadors are learning new skills in leadership, teamwork, and speaking that they will use throughout their lives.
Looks like it's back to me now, and so why do we do showcases? And I talked a little bit about earlier that it's really that culmination after all the learning, but in this case, I'm going to use a correlation, we do a, uh, Cloverbud Project Day once a month throughout the whole winter through their program, um, year, and Crowing County has a pretty good number of youth, it could be hybrid, it could be fully online, we've got a lot of different options that happen with this, but for this program, the, we're going to, I'm going to talk about the do, reflect, and apply in this, in this diagram here, and so the, the youth learn, the doing is the youth learn about a specific, um, topic during this program, they will be building skills such as active listening, to hear specific vocabulary words throughout while also doing hands-on activity. There will be opportunity for them to reflect, so the youth will be able to reflect on their learning with the help of adults asking what they learned and how they might change, might have changed, and what they liked about the activity. This allows that youth to continue to apply their communication skills in a comfortable setting, and then the last thing is we really apply, so the youth who attend, they can take that project home and share it with their family and share what they learned there, they also have the opportunity to bring it to the County Fair and have it as a project area there. And then there is a handout that correlates with that, that gives a little more detail if you're interested. And then the next thing is the Crowing County, the long-term outcomes for youth, there also is, we handed a little brochure that kind of reflects this, too, and so really, long-term, we really want the, what the youth learn to be lifelong, we don't want it to stay in 4-H, we want to give them skills that they can take into their vocation or their academic career, that we want it to be able to bring it into their community and that civic engagement, and making sure that they're tomorrow's leaders, even thinking about that employability, helping the youth see a career for themselves, helping them, give them paths to learn about different areas of careers. We do some, um, campus immersion opportunities for them as well, that they can take, and then at the end, really that full happiness, that, that wholeness of the happiness and well-bil, well-being, build relationships, self-confidence, and the direction for the future. And Shashana has done a really good, um, this brochure is a, uh, reflection of some of our adults that used to be in 4-H and what they're using it and how they're using it today, I encourage you to read it, because it's got some really good, it really is good to see that it's not just staying in 4-H, that it, it affects them for a lifetime. And back to Shashana.
Yes, so we just want to thank you for your time and your support of 4-H.
Thank you. Paul, were you?
May I?
May you, I was just going to ask Paul, were you a member of 4-H when you were growing up?
No.
You weren't, Future Farmers?
Cubs Cubs.
Future Farmers, were you in that?
Pardon me?
FFA?
No, I was not.
Okay, okay, just, just a question, yes?
As a former 4-Her myself, I do want to applaud the work that Extension does around the 4-H program. We, we talk about all the life skills, and oftentimes, people think that 4-H is just one time at the County Fair that they provide their animals, their vegetables, whatever it might be. As someone who was a 4-Her that did participate in the County Fair, never had any animals, I had all, a lot of other different project areas, but 4-H is where I learned parliamentary procedure, 4-H is where I learned public speaking, these were things that were community involvement, life skills that really prepare youth for the next steps in their lives, and the work that our Extension educators are doing in that regard is really great, and it's really interesting to see the different types of folks that they're reaching out to and those that they are providing that opportunity for.
Thank you, um, and just on, from my part, I have a, a granddaughter that lives in downtown Woodbury, and for the last, uh, I think, when I first got this role here, it was like, you're doing what with 4-H, baking something and doing it with, how can you do that, you live downtown Woodbury, but 4-H does reach out into the communities a lot more than I had actually thought, so I think that was pretty cool.
In the bigger cities, we do have some really good urban 4-H projects.
And she did get a blue ribbon, so we're really proud of her for that, so, thank you, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
And I think next on the agenda, we have Gary. Smile, look excited, we're all happy up here today, Gary.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, today we have again in front of you, um, another updated draft of the ongoing com, County Comprehensive Plan. Just a couple of highlights, we completed, uh, the public comment period, um, it ran from June 4th to July 5th, um, we had quite a few, uh, comments related to aquatic invasive species, we had, um, comments from Mississippi Headwaters, um, comment, uh, a couple of comments on how we coordinate with municipalities and, uh, some other comments related to the environment. Uh, we have our consultant, Robyn, on, uh, she has a, a small PowerPoint that she'll walk you through and show you some of the changes we did to the, uh, uh, plan to address maybe some of the comments and, and have some discussion with your feedback. Any questions before Robyn starts? Okay, Rob, it's all you, Robyn.
Take it over, Robyn.
Great, good morning, Commissioners, thank you for having us, um, having me here today, I'm excited that we're to this point and getting close to, um, finally, um, going through the adoption process for your new comprehensive plan, so, uh, as Gary mentioned, let's see if I can advance my next slide, uh, we did have a 30-day comment period, um, we provided, uh, opportunities for people to comment in a variety of ways, and we, um, really, um, uh, did push out, um, information, um, in kind of a, um, in a variety of ways, so we did have the, um, the updated plan posted on the website, uh, we issued a press release, uh, the county issued a re, press release that was picked up by, uh, at least three of the local papers, those are the three that we know about, we're not sure if there, there might have been some other ones, um, of course, County Administrator, thank you for, um, doing a, um, a conversation on WJJY, those have, um, been, uh, well-received, and, um, then we also post, uh, we did some social media posts, but we also actually posted a little link, um, to that show on, on the social media pages as well, so people would be able to, um, listen to it if they didn't catch it live. We sent out an email, we have an email list where people could sign up, and we actually have almost a thousand people on that email list, so every time we have an update, um, we've had, um, we've had, uh, you know, at least a thousand people receive those updates, and we also have some targeted groups that we send directly to, um, namely the, um, some of the Shoreland, um, and Lake Associations and the, uh, local chambers. We did allow people to post comments on the social media, on the, um, on the website, so we had like a little survey, online, uh, survey form that people could submit comments to, and then they could also submit them directly via email or in writing to the county. So, um, and then, um, I know this is in the, coming up in the future, but on Thursday, we're going to be, uh, doing a little workshop with the Planning Commission, and we'll be holding, um, a public hearing on, yeah, coming up this Thursday. And, see, uh, so what we heard, um, as, as Gary mentioned, we did receive comments from about 63 individuals and organizations, um, um, the, probably the, the main ones were, the main themes that we heard was, um, adding some reference to the Mississippi Headwaters, their, you know, organization, uh, similar to some of the watersheds that have, um, a lot of guidance on, on, on the watershed and, and, um, um, maintaining water, and so they suggested that we add them as a reference to the plan. Uh, we received the most comments about aquatic invasive species, we had a few comments about storage facilities, mostly in, uh, Cross Lake, in the city of Cross Lake, um, we heard a little bit about coordination with municipalities, and then there was another 21 or so comments, just in general, related to different aspects of the environment, and then there were some other, you know, smaller comments, um, as well.
Robyn, uh, you've worked with a lot of plans in the past, did you find the amount of comments that we've got on this, is this good or bad, or how does this relate to what you've worked with on plans before?
Um, Commissioner, this is, this is probably pretty standard, um, I was actually pleased to see 63, you know, people, um, did respond or did have comments, it meant that we did get the word out and that there was, you know, that people did have the opportunity to comment, um, so I think that's pretty typical, um, and, um, you know, they're usually probably, you know, pretty typical around main themes, and, um, I guess I'm not super surprised, uh, these are a lot of, you know, some of the same comments, water quality and, and preservation of, of natural resources were really two of the main themes that we heard early in the process, so, um, I guess I wasn't surprised to, to see additional suggestions there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, and as far as changes, you know, we do, um, um, we did make, uh, a lot of changes to the plan, uh, the version that you received, and I think that's currently posted on the website, does have all those changes tracked, so we did add references to the aquatic invasive species, um, a lot, um, namely, we did add the, um, reference to the county's annual prevention plan, um, but we also added references, a lot of the watershed, uh, watersheds, uh, deal with in their plans, so we did reference that, um, you know, specifically call that out, um, in the discussion about each of those watershed plans. Um, we did incorporate the Mississippi Headwaters, um, comprehensive plan into that as well, similar to like what we add, what we have for the watersheds, we added a little reference and a link to their website, um, for more different, more information. We revised the climate section, someone did, uh, call out that some of the data that we had in there was old, and so we did pull out, um, and update that information to data from 2024. And then one of the other things we noted was that, uh, the county's comp plan has jurisdiction, uh, what communities the county has jurisdiction over and what municipalities exercise their own planning and zoning regulation, um, that was, um, in addition, that was in addition due to, first of all, um, we noted that that was something we, we should have caught and added in the, um, added earlier on due to statutory requirements, but then, because we received some of those comments on, um, on, um, storage facilities in Cross Lake, we thought it was important to note that, you know, that was something that was, uh, that would be regulated by Cross Lake, um, city, city ordinances. And then there were some other, there was, you know, minor edits, people added, you know, suggested making some wording changes or, um, um, suggested making some clarification, so there were some of those changes made throughout as well. And then as far as next steps, as I mentioned, um, we're going to be doing the public hearing, uh, live on Thursday, and then, um, we're currently scheduled to be back before you in case there's any other final comments or edits, um, we'll report back what, um, the Planning Commission, um, says at the August 20th Committee of the Whole, and then, um, scheduled for County Board approval on August 27th. That was my, uh, short presentation, and happy to take any questions or comments.
Paul?
No.
Okay, well, the only comment I made, and it's one regards to, um, one here made in regards to the unorganized territory, because I looked at the comp plan that we'd done back in 97 on that, and, and, you know, I see unorganized territory becoming such a, a growth area for the county, but it really is under the county's board, because it is unorganized, and they have never organized to be a township, correct?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and so it does still fall under us, and we have this big umbrella just to look at that area, so I, I thought it was interesting, the comment was out there, but we had, we had chosen not to, as, as on this board, to actually do a separate comp plan for the unorganized territory, which was done back in 97, to include it in the whole thing, because I think back in 97, unorganized territory was very unorganized territory. I think now, as we've seen the years go by, and, and just in the last comp plan, the 2003 one that we've updated, I don't think anybody could have estimated that, that, that organized territory would have grown as much as it has, so I think it is proper to have it into our plan and not try to do a separate one, unless they were a separate township or a separate city, which, which I'm familiar with, cities doing their own comp plans and, and doing them on a regular basis, so I just, I just thought that comment was in there, and I thought it should be addressed, and I think you've addressed it, so, that's the only comment I really had, that I had for it. Anybody else have any other for Robyn?
Okay, we'll keep moving on, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll see you all on Thursday.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye.
Thursday, is that, she won't see all of us on Thursday. No, I haven't got, yeah. It's the Planning Commission on Thursday, that's, that's being presented, too, okay. Uh, get back to the agenda, if I can find it here, is that the last thing we had for our agenda? Is there anything you, anybody else has for the good of the causes, I would say? Okay, then, uh, we are adjourned.